You are up, Commissioner.
All right, Vann County Commissioners are now in session. First item on our agenda is Commissioners' Report Invoices. And any concerns?
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the Commissioners' Report and Invoices.
We have motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, we have Salary Rate Approval Form.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the salary rate position as presented.
We have motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then, we have pay period from 5/18 to 5/31. All right. Going to our work session agenda. Chaney, looks like you're up first.
Chaney Coulter, Event Manager.
Michaela, our Host and Director of Wellness at Porton Health Trust.
So, we have the Yoga in the Port coming back on September 21st. It's essentially at full labor, but we're at the same time strengthening our relationship with Porton Health Trust. It doesn't interfere with anything that we're doing, there's no extra labor. It's after the concert season, so everything will be cleaned up anyways. If you want to kind of explain how the event went last year?
Yeah, sure. We did a yoga class at the port. Went from about 7:00 in the morning to 11:00 total time. It's an hour-long class. We partnered with Breathe Yoga Community. And then after the yoga class, we had a health row of health-related vendors from the community. And we had about 150 people show up, so it was a great turnout. We didn't realize the yoga community that we were tapping into, so it was a very big success. We wanted to do it again this year. I know last year was a question if anybody was going to be selling anything. Nobody's going to be selling anything this year either. That's what we've got.
One question. What's the possibility of doing more of these?
That was brought up last year to where like maybe once a month was the situation. Since last year was the first year, we just wanted to get an eyeball of how it would go. And since it was so successful, we have considered doing it more often, maybe once a month up there if possible. We just have a small team.
Right.
And I don't know if we could necessarily pull it off. Maybe we give it to Breathe Yoga Community since they have a lot of instructors. But it was brought up last year that maybe we can do more.
And I bring that up because one of the amphitheaters that we try to emulate is Red Rocks in Denver. And they have huge yoga events.
I talked to the guy who does their yoga on the rocks so that I could maybe just get at like planning from last year. And it was very helpful talking to him, so.
Good.
That's kind of what I based mine off of.
Well, again, I would encourage us to see if we could do more of these. I think it's great for the community, it's a great event. I like that. Mr. Chair?
John had one question, and he called Scott, maybe he called you and talked to you?
I think he talked to Scott.
About the insurance?
Yeah, and Michaela was called also, so that will be fixed.
Okay, says a hundred thousand here instead of a million. And so, that'll be taken care of.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the contract with the change in insurance as discussed.
We have motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a great event.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So, I guess the other items that Scott had, we're not discussing. Maggie, that put you up.
Got here right on time, good job.
Good morning. So, Commissioner Moser, I know you know Allison.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Huff, I'm not sure if you do, or Jason, you either. Allison Bischoff is our Clinical Services Director. And so, she is here with me today to try to answer any questions that you guys might have. So, I sent over to Kristy some data that was pretty much through the end of the third quarter of our fiscal year for each of our departments. And so, just wanted to walk through that and see if you had any questions about that. If you've had a chance to review it. That we could just jump into that.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, our Clinical Services. We have a number of major programs, including immunizations, school health services, which you will not see data for on this spreadsheet. And we can talk about that when we're done. We do do STD testing at several jails, including the Bannock County Jail and the Caribou County Jail. We do medication for opioid use disorder. We do PrEP, which is preventative therapy for people at high risk for HIV infection. Reproductive Health Services, TB both latent and active. And then STD testing and counseling. So, as we walk through those data for Clinical Services, 59% of our clients through our counseling program, which is brand new. We hired a counselor just about a year ago. And it took several months to get like clinical procedures and policies and protocols developed and in place. But now, he's up and running, so. And I think that's awesome, because that's definitely a need in our communities.
Maggie, is he primarily focusing on adults or youth?
He will see all ages. Yeah. And so, we have done some outreach through like school districts, other providers, that sort of thing, to let people know of his availability.
And so, what's the referral mechanism? Is that just the school district?
That's just call and make an appointment. And then, yeah, it's just getting on his schedule. So, it's pretty easy, it's not super complex by any means, so. And one thing I'll add to is in addition to the counseling services that he's providing, he is doing presentations at schools. So, he did some at Hawthorne for a couple of different age groups, and those went really well, so.
Good.
Thank you for adding that, Allison. So, immunizations, our percentages for the services that we provide are a little bit lower. And that's because in some of our more rural counties, we are really the only immunization provider. So, we give a lot more shots in places like Bear Lake County, Caribou County, because we're just one of the major providers of immunizations in those communities. Here, we have the Pocatello Children's Clinic and Health West and, you know, Porton Family Medicine, some major providers that give the majority of the shots. We also have big vendors, national chain vendors like Costco, Fred Meyer, Albertsons that give shots as well. And local pharmacies like Mogs and Shavers that do vaccines. So, our intent is not to compete with them, but just to be there kind of as a safety net provider. But we also have people who have gotten shots from us for years, who just prefer us as a provider. And we also do provide some services that some providers just can't. So, for example, if people have difficulty with transportation, we'll go to their home. We do off-site vaccination clinics at work sites, ag operations, that kind of thing. So, that's our approach to immunizations.
So, is it done at a cheaper rate than some of these other resources?
So, not necessarily. Places like Costco and Fred Meyer often use things like flu shots as kind of a loss leader. So, it gets people in the door, and they do them really inexpensively, like maybe for $20, because they anticipate that people will spend additional funds while they're there getting that shot. So, those providers were not necessarily less expensive then. Although, we never turn somebody away due to inability to pay. So, that is a distinction between us and some of those other providers.
I was talking to the Commissioner from Caribou County, and he was talking about shingles and pneumonia. And so, what's the comparison with them?
On cost?
Cost, or?
Yeah, so.
Do you do more of them than the other facilities generally, or?
Probably so, and definitely in those outer counties, yeah.
Yeah. And we also do a lot more like travel vaccinations. That's something that has really, in the last year, kind of amazed us the demand for vaccines that are needed for overseas travels. So, things like yellow fever, Japanese encephalitis, malaria preventive medication. Those things have gone through the roof. Like unprecedented demand for those kinds of things. And so, we do a lot more of that than like a Costco, Walgreens, local pharmacy, that kind of thing.
Some of them don't even offer those vaccines, so they do come to us for those ones.
So, I guess that'd be my next question. You keep all that on hand? Or do you have to order it in once in a while specifically for people?
So, we do monthly inventory to see kind of where we're at. And we can gauge what's on the schedule ahead of time to be able to order. We only order what we're going to be able to provide. We don't try to order too much in excess because of expiration dates. But it comes very quickly, I mean, it comes within a week when we do order it, so, yeah.
Be tough to inventory.
Yeah, it's a big job.
There's a lot of vaccines that our nurses count, so.
Yes, yeah. And maintain proper storage of, which is interesting in and of itself. Our jail site testing, 57% of what we've done is at the Bannock County Jail. 55% of our medication for opioid use disorder clients are, or services are provided in Bannock County. 92% of the PrEP, which is the preventive prophylactic medication given to people who are high risk for HIV infection. 92% of those are in Bannock County. 45% of our reproductive health services are in Bannock County. 73% of our STD testing and counseling occurs in Bannock County. And then 84% of our TB. And thankfully, for our current year, they've all been latent TB cases, not active. And that's really important that we work effectively with them and get them through a course of treatment. Because if we don't do that, then there's the risk that they can become an active case and then start spreading that in the community. And that's a very serious disease. So, we work really hard to stay on top of that. We have a consulting physician, Dr. Luis Fernandez. His primary employer is Porton of Primary Care, but he is also our medical director. And he sees all of our TB patients along with our nursing staff. And sometimes our nurse practitioners. So, then jumping to environmental health. This is, as you know, the regulatory arm of the Public Health District. And even though, and Commissioner Moser, you were at IAC last week. Even though this is the enforcement branch, we really try to take an educational approach and a customer service approach with all of these programs. Rather than, you know, wielding the enforcement stick. We try to do that as rarely as possible.
Well, they showed up Monday to do the landfill.
Yes, Ken was out there on Monday, yes. So, he and I have not had time to talk about how that went, so I'm hoping it went well.
Everybody said that we passed, and it was good.
Good. No buried tire issue like we found in Bear Lake County recently. So, this is really driven, these services are really driven by demand and what is available in different communities. So, for example, when we look at subdivision lots reviewed, you can see the numbers are pretty consistent in most of our counties. Although Franklin County had a big number this year with 52 of the subdivision lots reviewed. They are a county that is really growing kind of as a bedroom community for Logan. And so, lots of subdivision reviews down there. When we look at septic systems, so we do a couple of different things. We look at applications as they come in and work with either developers or landowners based on what they're providing on that application to talk about what's going to be needed as they move forward with the septic system process. And that also gives us an idea of like, is building going up? Is building going down? What do we need to anticipate? So, we look at the number of applications that we've received. And then, we also go out and do onsite inspections on properties just to make sure that people are meeting the rule as to what's needed for the size of house. And then, the type of soil and proximity to any kind of stream or lake. Levels of groundwater, those kinds of things. So, Bingham County for the last couple of years has seen the most activity in this program, and that's continuing this year. We've done 124 inspections and received 123 applications for future septic systems. So, that activity continues to be pretty busy. Bannock County is second with 80 inspections and 89 system applications received and reviewed. When we look at septic system installers, Bannock County has 13 basic installers out of a total of 57 in our district and 10 complex installers out of a total of 31. So, sometimes property owners will choose to put a septic system in themselves. But most people do rely on licensed installers because there is some science behind this.
It's not as easy as just.
Yeah, it's not as easy as just digging a hole and putting it in. It's, and if you would ever be interested in going out with one of our environmental health specialists to watch that process, it's fascinating. And some parts of Bannock County are like down by lava. That, in the hills south and kind of west of lava, that's really interesting because people are wanting to build on some pretty steep slopes. And so, as I'm sure you're aware, and the soil types can be kind of tricky. And so, it's kind of an interesting process to watch. So, if you'd ever want to do that, we'd be happy to take you. Septic pumpers. We have 14 pumper companies with a total of 39 trucks in our eight-county area. Five of those companies are based in Bannock County. And 15 of the 39 trucks are in Bannock County. So, we license and inspect those as well on an annual basis. And we also provide education on an annual basis for those licensed installers about kind of the latest and greatest kind of cutting-edge stuff, as well as some of the basics for management of that. So, Bannock County has two solid waste facilities of our 17. So, we inspect those on an annual basis and then work on closure plans, pre-operations plans, those kinds of things. And most of our landfills and transfer stations do pretty well. We have had a couple over the last, I would say, three or four years who've had some issues, but they've been good to work with us, so. Childcare, Health and Safety, that's our program where we have an environmental health specialist who goes in and works with all licensed childcare facilities from a health and safety perspective. So, one of our goals is to limit the likelihood that a communicable disease outbreak will occur in a childcare setting. So, but we also look at safety things. So, we work closely with like the fire inspector, just trying to make sure that environments that kids are in are safe and going to keep them healthy. And our lead person on that, Michelle Ossler, does an amazing job with that program. She's a real advocate for children. And we have quarterly audits of that program done by the state. And she has had 100% on those audits for years. She really does a great job. Public Water Systems, we have 28 of 117 of those in Bannock County. So, those are also something, depending on the size, we inspect either once a year, once every two years, or twice a year. So, we have a lead environmental health specialist for that program as well. And she works closely with the Department of Environmental Quality to make sure that those public water systems, again, are not going to be a likely source of any kind of disease based on contamination with things like E. coli, nitrates, nitrates, those kinds of things. Public Swimming Pools, we do annual inspections and complaint inspections. Nine of our 15 licensed public swimming pools are in Bannock County. And just FYI, the definition of a public swimming pool is one that you have to pay a fee to use the pool. So, for example, hotel swimming pools, we don't license and inspect. Fitness center swimming pools, we don't license and inspect. It's things like Ross Park Pool, Indian Springs, which is out in Power County, I believe. Those kinds of pools are the ones.
So, there was a new pool built in Inkham. And they do swimming lessons and charge people for that. Would you inspect there?
Yep. Yeah. Yeah. And Mike Reese is our environmental health specialist who's the lead on that, although all of our people can do those inspections. And then, the Food Protection Program, which is our largest program in environmental health. You may have received this handout probably about six weeks ago. And so, this is looking at a number of years. But overall, 55% of the inspections of food establishments occurred in Bannock County. And then, we also look at violations. 68% of the violations occurred in Bannock County, which is a little bit high. But that is probably likely due to some of the types of facilities that we have here that are more prone to having violations. So, we always work with them, and they either correct those violations onsite, or they do follow up with us. Sometimes, they can provide documentation that show us the fix, like they can send us a picture of something.
What would be an example of violation?
So, food establishments are supposed to have a separate handwashing sink. And sometimes, we'll go in and there's no hot water at that handwashing sink, or no soap and paper towels, or they have like cleaning equipment or dishes piled in the sink, so it's clear it's not being used. So, that means that they're potentially using like a dishwashing sink for handwashing, and we don't want to do that because there's the potential for contamination then. If somebody's washing their hands in a sink that then you're cleaning dishes in, that's just not good practice. Or if somebody isn't cooling foods properly or heating them up properly, because there's a time window that's really sensitive for bacterial growth. And so, like, let's say somebody had a soup they were serving one day, and they stick it in a walk-in cooler in a big pot. That takes a lot longer to cool down than if they poured it like in a bigger flat pan, and it was more shallow, that can cool much more rapidly. And so, it's a lot less likely to foster bacterial growth that could make somebody sick. Cross-contamination, if somebody is like cleaning and cutting poultry or beef on a cutting board and then uses that same cutting board or knife to like chop lettuce. Not washing their hands in between those activities, those kinds of things. So, those are some of the more basic ones.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And we'd be happy to take you out on a restaurant inspection too, because they're pretty interesting.
So, the food trucks, how often do they get inspected?
So, they get a licensing inspection at least once a year. If we see them set up in different places, we will just check in with them and kind of observe. We won't necessarily do a full inspection if they've already been licensed. But there are some things that we watch for that are pretty obvious. Like, does it look like they're bringing food in that's been prepared in another place? So, we'll want to make sure that that was done in a commercial kitchen and not like in a home kitchen. If it's a potentially hazardous food, we'll want to make sure they have running water. We have had instances with mobile operations in the past where they haven't had running water, and that becomes an issue for lots of reasons. The handwashing is one. You know, cleaning dishes and supplies is another. But they are treated pretty much like a brick and mortar unless we get a complaint, and then we'll go out and do an additional investigation.
You see them all over anymore. I mean, they do the food truck roundup, and they.
Yeah.
At any event, there's.
Lots of them.
Four, five, six trucks.
Yeah. Most of them actually do really well. And all of our environmental health specialists do food inspections. Tracy Lamson is our lead environmental health specialist. And she does a great job, again, working with those people to make sure that they're preparing and serving food in a safe way so that we're not making people sick. Yeah, so, any other questions about the food program?
Nope, love it.
Okay. So, for WIC, Women, Infants and Children, we serve a total of 4,521 people in our eight-county area. 2,055 of those are Bannock County residents. And the total value of food voucher transactions in our eight-county area from January 1st of this year through April 30th was just over $1.1 million. So, that's a pretty good return back to our communities as far as, you know, helping support local business and industry. I'm very happy because our WIC program is one of the, is pretty much the only one in the state that did not see participation drop off during COVID. We've been able to maintain our client base and maintain our caseload. And as a result, we did just meet with State WIC on Monday. And so, our subgrant is going up because we are paid per participant. And so, for example, District 7 out of Idaho Falls, their WIC grant is going down over $80,000. And because they've lost participation. We have maintained and gone up, so ours is going up just under $20,000. So, we're happy to see that. I think Mallory and her team do a great job serving people. So, then.
It's always good to be in our Bonneville County.
So, the next thing that I have in front of me, this is not a department, it's a program. But what Paige provided to me was pretty comprehensive. So, I did hers as a standalone. So, our Public Health Preparedness Program, a lot of the work that they do is across our counties. But they do do some things specific to Bannock County or individual counties. And so, they do a lot of like local emergency planning committee meetings. They do tabletop exercises, activation drills. Right now, we're in the midst of, we have identified, I don't know if you've heard about avian influenza jumping to dairy cattle. So, we do have a dairy in Franklin County now that has been identified as having cattle that have been impacted by this. And so, we're working with the Department of Ag. They are actually working directly with the dairies. And so, if dairies want things like personal protective equipment for their farm workers, then they make that request to the Department of Ag. The Department of Ag lets us know, and then we work directly with the dairy to provide them with those supplies.
You let Robert know that, right?
I did.
Good.
Yes, I did. Thankfully, it's not his dairy. So, I was happy to hear that. So, that's an example. Um, so that's um an example of um something that we're responding to. Or real, another thing we're really watching is measles because we have really seen measles in this country sort of um accelerate and spread over the last twelve months. Um, and because we don't have high vaccination rates in Idaho, that's concerning to us. Um, so that's another thing that we're watching very closely and um working with our other partners in healthcare just to be prepared to be able to respond should a provider identify a suspect case of measles, what our response would be. So um, that's a very active program. Um, I know they work with Wes on a regular basis, um as well as our tribal partners. And um, so happy to answer any questions you have about that.
Good.
Yep.
And then for community health, um, this is a broad array of programs. Most of them are grounded in prevention, education, um policy work, that kind of thing. Um, so we do a lot around tobacco prevention and cessation, vaping prevention and cessation. Um, we're at the villages on a weekly basis, teaching classes um for kids through that um mechanism. We also go directly into schools and provide that education. We've provided vaping detectors to schools that offer our curriculum. Um, interestingly, and I was a little skeptical about this at first, we provide them actual vape detectors. And but we also provide sort of fake vape detectors that look exactly like the real things because those have been demonstrated to be a deterrent also because kids can't necessarily tell if they're fake or real. So interesting. Um, but uh fifty-seven percent of the schools that we've worked with are in Bannan County. Sixty-seven percent of the students and fifty percent of the classes that we've taught are in Bannan County um within depth. And again, that is largely driven through the villages. Seventy-nine percent of the students that we've reached are in Bannan County and seventy-three percent of the classes. We also do a lot of tobacco prevention outreach um through community events and that kind of thing. About half of that has occurred in Bannan County. Um, our DOPP opioid prevention program is the one that we do things like Narcan training. So we did that for all of the county employees, um, I think about a year ago, maybe. Um, but we'll also take that into schools, work sites, community groups, any setting that's interested in having that. And we really encourage that because you just never know when you're gonna come across a situation where that might be needed. So lots of education around that issue. We also are facility facilitating now um the Public Health and Safety Team or FAST Team. So we have participation from all local law enforcement in Bannan County, um, other healthcare providers, ISU, the school district, Aid for Friends. Um, it's a pretty broad coalition. Um, and the goal is to share data so that everybody has a more complete picture of what's happening around fentanyl and other opioids. Um, I just was reading about yet again, another um really powerful veterinary tranquilizer. That is, it, um, so we've been dealing with Xylazine for about a year now. There's another one that I'm not even gonna try to pronounce. Um, starts with an M. And um it's been seen as far west as like the Minneapolis area. I, we haven't necessarily seen it in Idaho. But i- it seems like we just start to get on top of one facet of this um really epidemic and another piece is introduced. So um, we're gonna be watching for that too. But that FAST Team has been, I think, a great resource. So they have been meeting monthly. They're um, now that they're up and running, they're gonna go to every other month. But I think that that's a positive addition in our community, just getting all those partners talking on a regular basis.
You know, for a while there, it was always in the news and there was always a lot talked about. But here lately, it seems like it's quieter to me.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what, what, what do you see in as far as the that horse tranquilizer? Was it trank or trunk or whatever?
That's the Xylazine, yeah, yeah. So um it has been identified in Idaho. Um, but I, that's really all I can tell you, Commissioner Huff. I don't, I don't have a lot off the top of my head. I could find that out and let you know.
I got, Tony mentioned that they've seen it a few times here, but it hasn't really swept through.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so Fit and Fall Proof is our um class series that we hold for seniors to help them build balance, strength and flexibility. And um those are taught by volunteer leaders that we train and then provide supplies to, provide ongoing training to, um, provide support to. And those are held typically at like senior centers or churches or other community organizations that are willing to hold those. Um, it's a evidence-based program that was actually created in Idaho. And we've been involved with it since its inception about twenty years ago. So currently, um, we have nine hundred and fifty-four participants total district-wide. Three hundred and nineteen of those are in Bannan County. Um, of the twenty-nine site visits that our Fit and Fall Proof Coordinator has done, twelve of those have been in Bannan County. And four of the eight Fit and Fall Proof leader trainings have been held in Bannan County. So it's a great program. So if you know anybody who's a little bit older who maybe could benefit from some regular exercise, it's very gentle, um, it's very adaptable. People can either do it in a chair or standing up. Um, and we do a really good job training those class leaders to help um support different levels of physical activity.
Surprised Jeff doesn't say John and I.
I don't think you're there yet, Ernie. Um, so IPAN and CCP, that is our Idaho Physical Activity and Nutrition Program and our Comprehensive Cancer Control Program. So with that, we do um specific like class type presentations. We do a lot of community outreach at community events. Um, we do public service announcements and then she also does our regular newsletter. And so when we look at those, two hundred and thirty-six out of three hundred and twenty-eight or seventy-two percent of the presentation participants were in Bannan County. Um, about thirty-five percent of the outreach education happened in Bannan County. Thirty-four percent of the PSA recipients and then forty percent of the newsletter recipients are in Bannan County. And she just talks about all kinds of issues connected to physical activity and nutrition and cancer prevention. Um, we really focus on skin cancer prevention because that is very common in Idaho. Um, we spend a lot of time outdoors. Um, we're at a little bit higher elevation. Um, and so we work with like Pebble Creek to promote the use of sunscreen during winter sports activities because sometimes people forget about that. Um, the local swimming pools, local golf courses, local parks, that kind of thing to promote education about sunscreen use as well as like hats and long sleeves and those kinds of things, staying in the shade. Um, and then also colon cancer, so regular screening. Um, signs and symptoms to watch for because we are seeing as a nation colon cancer being identified at much younger ages than historically we have. Um, typically, the the screening age for colonoscopy had been fifty. That's been lowered to forty-five. But we are even seeing colon cancer in people in their like late twenties and thirties. So a- and oftentimes, it seems like by the times it's identified in that age group, it's pretty advanced because most people aren't thinking about that possibility, so they're not being screened. Um, Women's Health Check is our breast and cervical cancer screening program that we provide to women who either have no health insurance, have health insurance that doesn't cover those annual screenings. So for example, if somebody has a um like a very high deductible kind of catastrophic emergency healthcare plan that doesn't cover prevention, we can help access mammography and cervical cancer screening um through that program. And forty-two of the forty-six clients um that are enrolled currently are in Bannan County. When we look at oral health, um, she does lots of um work. She does not only um prevention education, but she does actual hands-on like dental screenings, dental sealants, fluoride varnish, those kinds of things. Um, and I've talked with you um at one of our last meetings, I think in March, about Give Kids a Smile, which is our partnership with Idaho State University and area dentists and dental hygienists, where we bring kids in on a Saturday to the dental hygiene program at ISU. And we do full gamut dental care um that we're able to do in that setting. Um, our dentists are wonderful because they are very willing to take kids that need further work that we're not able to accomplish on that day and see them in their offices free of charge. Um, and this year, we had some pretty extreme situations with kiddos with really bad situations. Um, we had one little girl, she was, I think, about four, who had decay on every tooth. And a local dentist and the Skyline Surgery Center both donated their services so that they could get her mouth taken care of. Because when a child has that advanced decay or even 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 a little bit of decay, it can interfere with learning at school. Um, they're just in a constant state of pain. So it's a really critical program. Um, Parents as Teachers is a voluntary program where we work with um families either through pregnant, from pregnancy through age five of the child. Um, we do a lot of screening and assessment and then just provide support to those parents um to help them um make good connections with their kids, help them understand the reading, the importance of reading to their child. Um, help them identify any like developmental delays early so that they can get connected to appropriate resources to help that child with that delay. Um, we also do monthly, what are called group connections where parents can, families can come together and they do like a fun activity. And it just kind of gives them a little bit of support from other parents that are of kids the same age. Um, and so anybody can participate in that program. Again, it's an evidence-based program. Um, decades of research that show that families that participate in this type of program have better outcomes for their kids as far as education, um, less involvement in the juvenile justice system, those sorts of things. So it's a great program. And forty-eight of the seventy-one families that we've served are in Bannan County. Suicide prevention is a really important program because we continue to have very high suicide rate, suicide rates in southeastern Idaho and in Bannan County in particular. And so again, we do a lot of prevention education, policy work with healthcare providers because evidence shows that many people who die by suicide have visited a primary care provider or some type of healthcare provider in thirty days prior to them dying. So just regular consistent screening is really critical. So that if somebody does disclose that they are thinking about dying from suicide, um, that that healthcare provider can intervene appropriately. Um, we do a lot of work with um like funeral homes, providing survivor support packets to them. Um, and we do have survivor support groups. Um, working with schools on prevention education. And um, and thankfully, I I'm not aware that we have had, that we had a death from suicide in our local school districts this last year, which is different from the previous year. So we're very thankful for that. Um, adult men are actually the age group that is the most at risk for dying from suicide in our region. Um, and the most common method is firearms. So we also do a lot of work around providing education about gun safety, providing gun locks, providing um medicine lock cabinets, um, those kinds of things. So it's a very complicated issue and um we have a long way to go on that, so. And then our diaper bank is our program where we provide diapers to families that need them. And ninety-five percent of the diapers that we've distributed have been in Bannan County. Um, yeah, so that's a lot of diapers and a lot of kiddos.
That's a lot of expense.
Yeah, thankfully, um, that's totally donation funded. So um, we, we do a couple of diaper drives a year, one on Valentine's Day at Fred Meyer. And people may donate either diapers or cash. And then we work with the Idaho Diaper Bank out of Boise um because we can purchase diapers through them much more inexpensively than if we were to go to the store and buy them. So um, and people can make donations through our website anytime. Um, so that is a hundred percent funded by donations.
You don't see clotheslines anymore.
Nope. No, you don't. You don't see cloth diapers anymore either, very, very, very rarely. So anyway, a- and so that's a lot of our kind of major programs. It doesn't capture everything that we do, but um those are some of the major pieces. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
No, I was just looking at some of your data on suicides and stuff. We've had a big uptick in that over the last decade.
Yeah.
And Bannan County seems to be a leader in the state in that.
Yeah.
Which I don't like.
No, we don't like it either, Commissioner. And um, it is, it is so complicated and complex. So we have just applied for a HERSA grant. We've never applied directly for a federal grant before, so I have no idea what our chances are. But if it's based on data, it's, we should have a pretty good shot. And um, so when we look at causality, it it's so complicated. And it's often people who feel like they have become a burden to their family, um, who have a sense of hopelessness, who don't have a fear of pain. Because most of us, our natural inclination is self-protection. Um, we don't want to get hurt, we don't want, and so um, that's why we see really high rates in veterans, in particular, veterans who have served in combat situations because they've experienced that and um they're not as afraid of it as somebody who hasn't served in that capacity. Um, so um, lack of economic opportunity, lack of access to behavioral health resources, kind of a culture and mindset that is um, pull yourself up by your bootstraps. You don't ask for help, that's a sign of weakness. Um, so it's so complex. And um, I'm, I am really hopeful that we will be funded with this grant because it will just give us a capacity to do a lot more to address more of those risk factors than we're currently able to do.
Just interesting, I'm looking at a data table from the Fed talking about premature deaths. In the last ten years, we've increased over a hundred deaths premature.
Mm-hmm.
Suicide is a.
It's a big driver of that.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Keep me posted on that grant if you get that.
Yeah, I will, for sure.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I'm sure I'll hear about it.
I'm sure you will.
One of you, one of you, I'm just curious.
Well, our our um suicide prevention coordinator is um a really um committed young professional. And she did a great job writing this grant. Um, and so I am, I think our chances are maybe like sixty-five, thirty-five. I just don't know. Um, so again, if it's driven by data, it's a no-brainer, so.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything to add?
I don't think I have anything to add, no. Unless you have specific questions for me and Clinical Services, yeah.
I think we're good.
Yep, sounds like you guys are busy.
Very much so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thanks, thanks for the time. And um, have you been over to the rodeo?
Red Aprognation on Monday.
Oh, good.
The first session.
Well.
Not yourself?
Um, I have not because I have had stuff every day and every evening this week. So I haven't been over there, but I've seen the traffic.
They are amazing athletes. I'm just telling you that. I'm just telling you that, they are.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We gonna flip a coin?
We'll race him, see if he can go up there.
She said, please don't take a long time.
Wow, all right.
I'll try to make it quick and precise. Paul Brumster, Bannock County Public Works. Morning, everybody.
Morning.
So, did they get, did you get any of this information in their packet?
It isn't in my packet, but I read it this morning, let's go with this morning.
Just to kind of, we didn't know for sure which day I was going to be on, so I didn't, wasn't able to get that right away to you.
The email says it was added to the packet.
Yeah, so I, I just thought that might be a good thing that you can look at or look back on, on something that, what we're talking about. Starting now with Roden Bridge, all our gravel maintenance is completed. That's our gravel blading, ditching, chloriding, and everything like that. And now we're, did a few little projects in between, but we're moving towards our asphalt maintenance now, which will, we start out with chipping. And we've got about thirty-one miles or so to do. A lot of it's down in the south end of the county. We'll be working on, I know Emma's got, has put that out too, to kind of try to help everybody know where we're working and stuff. But a lot of them are also going to be, the old highway, all from McCammon South. There's, it's going to be some of our bigger roads out there, Hawkins, Aramo Road that goes through Robin, some of Marsh Valley Road and stuff like that. We're trying to get things a little, our maintenance program centralized in areas as we go, so we're not doing as much mobilization. So, we've got our chips, got everything ready to go, and Monday morning, we'll be starting chipping. We had a little bit of flood stuff go through. We had a couple, I know Hokatello got hit a little bit with some hail and stuff. We got some spotty areas out across the county as, as them storms came through. We got some flooding here and there, a little bit around Indian Creek in Incom and around Virginia. There was kind of a little cell that went through there and did a little damage with roads and stuff that we're repairing right now, just gravel roads that we're fixing back up that got washed a little bit, but working on them. And right now, our guys are doing, they, after the meeting, I'll go up and check that off for being done. But the road going into Idaho Power, where we're looking at doing the parking lot, they should be completed with it here, if they're not already. And we'll have that done. So, we have it grubbed off and the road for Idaho Power. So, now, it'll be just, and like Scott said, his event staff will do a little of that on Fridays and stuff, but we can start graveling it, and then the temporary fence and stuff like that he's putting in. But it should be getting ready to go.
Well, appreciated your crew down there Monday in Downey.
Oh, yeah.
Did all that upgrade around the sonotubes.
Yeah, visited with Daniel on that, and it sounded like it went really good. And, yeah, I'm glad we could have helped.
I was just thinking, when I saw a post from Emma about this, but the guardrail stuff that you were working on, are you done with all that for the summer? Or, and gonna do some more in the fall?
What we're looking at is, we've had a lot of equipment, things go on and different, and our paint being a hundred thousand more than it was last year, and some of them things. I'm looking at if we'll, if we'll have funding or not out of this budget. So, what I, I think, like worst case now, we're trying to set up a timeframe with them that they finished it in October, but we could utilize some of our funds for, for next year's. Because we're kind of running shy with, with all the expenses to make it fit for the rest of this year. So, we did about, we've got about another hundred thousand we need to do. We did about seventy-five thousand, which took some of the south end of the county, Mink Creek, but we've got Buckskin Area and the old highway. So, we're, got it on the schedule, but we've got it kind of tentative on whether it's going to be August, September, or October, just for the fact of funds.
But you're still planning on it?
Yes, yes. It's just, funding might push it a few months back. But yes, we are still looking at that. We, we, you know, we had an accident in, in the Robin Gap that we've lost a life in too and stuff. And so, we're, we're really looking at all of these safety concerns and trying to, to work with budget and get all of it we can get as fast as we can.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. And we are working on our new asset management program, Open Gov. We're working with GISIT and my staff. So, we've got Heather and Jess helping out, and Adam and Steve, and then our team. So, we've had a few meetings next week. We are going to do kind of the big bulk data stuff. It's going to be two full days of us all working together and getting that done. But hopefully, we can get some of that going so we can get that moved forward. There's a lot of, a lot of data and a lot of things to move around to get that all up and going, but we're spending good working with this company and, and with the other staff here at the county and, and moving forward. Fleet with the Roden Bridge, kind of, and me and Chrissy's been working on a few of these things. We wanted to kind of, I know she couldn't be here today, but we, we kind of want to work on as much as we can with that because you're going to be seeing budgets coming next week and stuff like that. Kind of a, just a quick overview of that is, we have a hundred and fifty-five total vehicles in our small fleet. This is just the small trucks and the cars. We have six hundred and eighty-something total with all our fleet. But just for the small cars, so that's, that's what our shop gets to work on is around six hundred and eighty different pieces of equipment, which is pretty busy and stuff. But if we're talking about just small fleet, we have a hundred and fifty-five cars and small pickups that we utilize throughout the county. Our recommendation is, we're looking at auctioning twenty-one vehicles. Twelve of them will be ones we don't replace. So, we've already worked with a lot of the departments, and, and even some of them departments have already been bringing them vehicles to us, have been having good relationship, but they understand what we're trying to do, and no big concerns on the ones we're not going to replace that weren't maybe getting utilized enough. But, so then twelve would lower our, our fleet, you know, by twelve vehicles, which would better our utilization of the rest of them. We're recommending with this, and it's all kind of like, say, works kind of together. If we move one and we do this and buy one, it kind of all works together. Then with that, we'd be reallocating eleven vehicles. These are ones that maybe have more miles and can go somewhere that's going to put less on it, better utilization. Some of them are for facilities. They have some vehicles, whether it's that electrical kind of truck that we can use somewhere else, but eleven vehicles getting moved to better utilization.
Speaking of that, I was visiting with Hal the other day, and he was talking about swapping out one of his trucks for like a Tahoe or a vehicle like that. I told him to get a older buddy, so just...
Yeah, then we can, if something worked better for him and stuff, we can see if there's one coming out of here or there. It's, it's a little hard ride at the moment because our stuff's so worn that for utilizing them to in somewhere else, we're, we're kind of, that's why we're at, looking at trying to purchase so many and stuff is to get to where we have a better utilization of it. And so, I have talked with Hal a little bit, and, and he's even on some of his vehicles looked at if he could do a pool, you know? But we're kind of not trying to make it all at one sec, time. We're kind of trying to work through this and what, because there's more options we're looking at too. But I think it would be, what we found is, there's a lot of vehicles and stuff that they're like, that doesn't really work for us, you know? We just got it because, or whatever, but, and so, I think we could work some stuff out. As you'd see in them papers, just kind of like the truck for pool, it, it says commissioned by it, but it's a pool truck is what we would like to get. And the reason why we'd be looking at getting that is because there's three different departments that we're not renewing a new pickup truck with, and we're getting rid of these because they only use them limited times. So, that pool truck would help multiple departments.
Get rid of three vehicles and one, and use...
And one pool. It's not necessarily, it's a commissioned vehicle, it's a pool vehicle.
And we'll have more discussion on this Tuesday also, with some of the conversations.
And so, what I've done with that is, I've broke it down to the, so if we have seventeen vehicles that we're recommending on purchasing, you're looking at about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars, eight hundred and ninety, somewhere around there, depending on what we can get the prices. We didn't want to, we inflated them a little bit. So, you know, depending on what kind of deal, so we could lower that, that money. But yeah, with the plan, if we can go with the plan, your first couple of years are going to be a little higher, but then we should kind of, what it shows, because we've got a ten, fifteen, twenty-year out plan of, we should drop back down to around like two hundred thousand, and that will keep us all in. It's just kind of pulling us out on some of these older vehicles, which will also in turn, if we have a better turnaround, we can have some of these reallocations we're looking at is because, like, take Landfill or Event Center or something, that they don't put a lot of miles on them, or it's going to be in some rough conditions. We could put some miles on a truck or something somewhere else, and then switch them over to there, but they'd have a, still a good vehicle. Where right now, there's not a lot of room to, if we're moving one, it might be a worn-out thing moving from one to the other, and it doesn't, that's what we're seeing a little bit at the Vent Center, Center, is some of them are worn out when they get them. And so, but with the plan, I'm hoping that we can make that, that we can better utilize them. And our paint for roads, we've got the resolution signed to go open market. We went out and, and checked our, we got three different people that we worked with. We're looking at going with Idaho Traffic Safety, as are people that'll paint and supply the paint and paint the roads this year. And that's still, that's the one that's a hundred thousand more than we paid. But the other ones are up to four and five hundred thousand more than we paid last year. So, I don't know, I mean, I understand material goes up and different things go up, but I don't know why that world has went crazy.
How do you budget for that? It's impossible.
And that's part of, like I say, with the guardrails stuff. I mean, that hundred was going to go to guardrail, now it's going to go to paint. But that's all I had on the Roden Bridge. Any questions on...
Questions, comments? Thank you. It's good for you to come in and share with us. A lot of projects going on.
Annoxious weeds, we're, we're working with other departments. We've been working with people calling in, people asking questions. It's, it's a hard thing. The county has spent over thirty thousand dollars. Well, the county got a grant through the program that we do with...
Share.
With the, with the share program. So, not all people got maybe the information. We tried to get it out and stuff like that. But what that goes to is, we can give chemical to residents that they can use for, whether it's Dyer's Wode or whatever, and we've had a lot of people use it for that, that they can get free in their time, helps with that cost share, pay for that. We have had the helicopter fly a few spots that we've had as the county, and that county pays for that. It's not out of cost share. But then also, while we were doing that, it made it work for private people to utilize the helicopter and utilize the cost shares. So, they had the chemical and not, for free, and all they had to do is pay for the helicopter. So, we're trying in all our ways, we're working with other agencies, trying to, I think our best option right now is working together on trying to come up with a good plan for next spring. And Dyer's Wode is kind of a bi-yearly kind of thing to where next year, you probably won't see it as bad, and then the next year, it'll be worse. So, it kind of goes every other year. But if we can get plans together, because I, I think the biggest concern I see is, we have so many different entities, whether it's the state, BLM, Forest, Railroad, that's a lot of our worst problem areas, and so, we need to work together to come up with a good solution. We're working on it.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, Shanda, I tried.
You did great. Good morning, Commissioner Shanda Crystal, Chief Procurement Officer, here with the Procurement Department. We want to start at the top with the Detention Center landscaping. That's been back and forth, the first draft, and sent to Legal for review, and the plan is to have it live next week. The second one for the Assessor's Office, that is, the HVAC is part of the whole renovation that they're doing over there. As Dan and I talked about it, we are going to do it as bid out in four separate chunks, but we're going to advertise at once in the newspaper to just save costs there. But the first one that will roll out of Architectural Services is going to be the HVAC, and they do anticipate that sometime next week. And so, we should have a calendar sometime then and be able to know when that one will be live.
Jason got introduced to that system.
Yeah, I was over there in the attic yesterday, two days ago. It's interesting up there.
We'll come with questions. The next one for the security cameras, that final draft, I have got all the scope of work back to me, and so I do anticipate that out to the group this afternoon for review and then to Legal for approval. If we drop down to the active...
Along that way, that line, in the way of funding, I mean, it wouldn't be with this, but I talked to Kyle and also to Dylan, the gates at the Landfill and the Roden Bridge there. They've been having a lot of problems with them. If we have funds, that says, that's part of security too, that we could pull out of that. So, before we give all those funds away, there's, there's an area there that we still have some thoughts to think about.
Okay, excellent. Down to the active ones for the facilities on the boilers. We held a pre-bid meeting yesterday that went well, and questions on that solicitation are due on Monday. On the jail HVAC renovations, we did issue an addendum last week extending the due date to that until next Monday, and just giving companies a little longer to make sure that they have any of the bonds or other requirements that we had in place. So, that will be due on the seventeenth. And the final one I wanted to review was the emergency services for La Veranchas. When we opened that bid, Charity mentioned that we might need an exception with an MOU with IDL, and she checked with them, and that's not necessary to have the MOU, but we will need to explain how and why we didn't meet the one hundred as we move forward with the grant. But Tiger was fine with where we were at, and they'll move forward with the evaluation, and we'll come back before the board with a recommendation here in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
That's what I have for the board, unless you have any other questions.
Thank you.